We're going to now pick up item 70 and then item 41 and then we'll do the zoning cases. There are four of those. One of those has two items. Councilmember Tovo, you want to lay out 70?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass 70 and...
Okay, is there a second to the motion to pass 70? Councilmember Alter seconds that motion. Councilmember Tovo?
I can speak after my colleagues. I think there are some amendments possibly and then I have some comments after my colleagues. So they'd like to say.
Okay, Councilmember Poole, do you have an amendment? No? Okay, Councilmember, what?
Oh, yes, I do, sorry. It's a really simple one. On the, uh, thanks for calling on me, and I put it up on the message board and it is to add at line 129, after community partners.
Add and regional governmental entities.
That's correct.
Is there any objection to that amendment being added? Hearing on the Poole amendment is added.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kitchen?
I have an amendment that I just sent around and, um, it's, um, beginning at line 116, it adds relocation assistance. And it also reinforces language that I think that Councilmember Tovo may already have about in all council districts for campsites. So that it reads, city manager self-present council with a description of and budget for appropriate relocation assistance and infrastructure at designated encampments, and then it goes on with Councilmember Tovo's language. And then the second part of my amendment is adding to the final bit, resolved clause, which speaks to information that's brought back to us later on July 1st. And that is, um, as well as such land that could serve as parking sites for people living in cars. So it asks for the city manager to identify, uh, land for, uh, that could serve as parking sites, but it puts that not as the immediate action, but as the action that comes back to us at the end of July. Or not end of July, July 1st, sorry.
Okay. I'm looking for your amendment.
It should, uh, I don't know if, we sent it to Katie, I don't know if she's sent it around yet. I've shared it with Councilmember Tovo, I'm one of her co-sponsors, so.
Yes, it's posted.
Okay.
And in backup.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any objection, this Kitchen makes, Councilmember Kitchen moves an amendment to item 70, is there a second to the Kitchen amendment? Councilmember Poole seconds, is it, is there any objection to the Kitchen amendment? Hearing no objection, the Kitchen amendment is added. Continue discussion on item 70. Councilmember Tovo, did you want to address it?
Um, sure, Mayor, I will. First of all, I just want to thank my, my co-sponsors for their support of the item. And, and also I just want to stop and really thank our staff, especially Diana Gray, who has worked tirelessly since she became our homeless strategy officer and manager. In this setting, I wanted to, to just encourage you to really empower your staff, including Diana Gray, to bring forth other creative short-term options and solutions that can help our constituents who are going to be impacted by the passage of Prop B. And it, it strikes me that as one of our top priorities in this city, this may be an office that needs some additional resources. And so just want to encourage you to, to consider whether there are staff around the city who could be also focused on this work in the, in the weeks ahead especially, but as we, as we really work to, to, um, address the issue. You know, this has been a, um, a very challenging, very difficult days in our community. Clearly, the voters have indicated that they want to see a more balanced use of the public space, and we're going to do that in our city, in compassionate and humane ways. The resolution today is, is designed, the resolution today to create designated camping spaces will not just help achieve that, but it would also, will also address the real need that we have for alternative places for individuals experiencing homelessness to go. Our shelters, our emergency shelters are at capacity. And it's understanding that Campus Bronza, um, the designated camping area set up by the state is also at capacity. And so when individuals in encampments ask where they should go, um, we need to have places to suggest. This is not going to be an easy process and it will take a lot of resourcefulness and creativity, you know, from each and every one of us trying to identify sites that can meet this bill. And, and the acknowledgement, and I'll, you know, I said this in the resolution and I've said it in my conversations about, about the resolution this week, this is not a solution to homelessness. This is not a great alternative. A great alternative is housing. We will end homelessness with housing. These designated camping areas are critical because we need those alternatives. But I know my office and I are going to remain laser-focused on supporting the work of creating housing. And I know that this council has spoken again and again about its commitment to do the same. And so, you know, that I want to just assure anyone looking at this resolution and I, and what I hope is its passage, that we are firmly committed, um, to the goal of creating housing for individuals experiencing homelessness. In some of the conversations over the last weeks, I've, I've certainly heard a lot of frustrations being aired about, about what the, what the city has done, wondering why the city hasn't done more, suggesting that the city doesn't have a plan. And, and so with your indulgence, I'm going to rapid-fire list just some of the things we're done, because I, I, that we've done at the city, because we really need, we need the community to understand some of the actions we've taken and we need their participation in identifying other things that need to be done next. So, very quickly.
Kathy, real quick, because I, I know that everybody wants to hear this as much as I do and I think we're going to do a disservice. I'm having a hard time hearing you, I don't know if anybody else is. I just want to make sure our audience can hear you well.
I appreciate it. I won't backtrack unless you think I missed something key, but in any case, I'm going to just rapid-fire list just a few of the actions that we've taken over the last couple of years that I think are important to know. Um, we created and passed a community plan for ending homelessness, the Austin Action Plan to End Homelessness. And I have strategies which we've worked diligently on. Outreach services and shelters, addressing disparities, providing housing and support services, strengthening our response system, building the community commitment from the public and private sectors. And the recent community summit that many of our partners participated in really flushes that out, adds details, a timeline and estimated costs. We waived city fees for the 400 units at Community First Village, that was a little over $400,000. We allocated 1.5 million to the Salvation Army for the Wrath Gaber Women and Children Shelter. We expanded the city's Women and Children Shelter with our bond funds. We allocated $500,000 to the Downtown Salvation Army to help ensure that children experiencing homelessness could be moved from downtown and to the Wrath Gaber Center, which was so overdue and so necessary. We changed the arch contract to really make it housing-focused so that individuals, the guests who are at the arch are being connected to housing and can leave the shelter into permanent housing. We funded a million dollar, well, we funded, sorry, not that much. We funded behavioral health services with integral care in the Downtown Austin Alliance for individuals in the downtown area. We changed the downtown density bonus program to make sure that those fees which are generated from property taxes can be used for vouchers, not just the creation of housing. We've paid for childcare for parents experiencing homelessness so that they can go to work or school. We restored a qualified mental health professional to the host team. We purchased permanent restrooms and water fountains in the downtown area. We created the Sobering Center, which is a diversion program that serves many in our community, not just individuals experiencing homelessness. We put $4 million toward the funding of MCOT. We created and funded an eviction counseling program for about $250,000. And we have been funding our housing fund. Those are just a couple of the things that we've done in the past. Today alone, we invested more than $3 million in rapid rehousing services for individuals who are living in encampments who will be served through the Heal program that Councilmember Kitchen sponsored. As a city, we own two emergency shelters, we provide support to other shelters, we invest in our contracts process with multiple organizations who provide housing services, behavioral health to individuals experiencing homelessness. We build affordable housing, we invest bond dollars, and we invest the property tax that we gain from, from public properties that are now on the tax rolls. And I run through this list, important that our community knows, we have taken action. However, we have a lot more work to do. And I really invite the community to join us in that work. The community summit that just concluded identified and set a really ambitious goal to house an additional 3,000 people over the next three years. I think last year we, we housed in this community about almost 2,000 people. Housing an additional 3,000 people in the next three years is ambitious, but we can do it and we really need to. You know, and I, I know, Ms., I've thought about, about this issue a lot over the last several weeks. You know, one thing I know is that regardless of how people voted on Prop B, I really believe that most people on every side of that issue share in common the deep desire for our neighbors to have safe and secure housing. And I know that we can progress on our shared commitment of ending homelessness in the city if we work together and we work creatively and we work effectively and we have full and data-driven conversations with one another. So thank you for letting me run through just some of the actions that we've taken. Again, I think it's important that we, that we both acknowledge the work and really set some ambitious goals. And again, commit to really doing so across party lines and doing so in really productive ways. And, and again, with recognition that today's, today's measure is, is necessary, but is not the end, is not the end game and is, and should not be the focus housing should be. And it is really going to take our collective hearts and minds and dollars to really ensure that, that our community with the most can provide our neighbors with the least and that each and every one of our neighbors has a safe and stable place to sleep. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovo, thank you for bringing this and I appreciate the opportunity to join with the other co-sponsors and, and the council members that are going to, to support this. Thank you for that historical running. Obviously, this has been the highest priority of the council and probably the item that we have spent the most time discussing and involved in over the last, uh, three years, uh, even before we took the action we did. If you would just publish that, post that on the message board, that list you had, so that it was available to all of us, I would, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, although I would say the caveat is that's just a snapshot. That's just like the work I'm most familiar with. It's not by any means comprehensive, but I believe we do need to have a comprehensive list. I think that'd be really super useful.
Right. That'd be good, and maybe we could all add to it. By way of history, touching base on, on this issue, uh, providing sanctioned camping areas. When the council took the action that it took two years ago, uh, part of the action that day was to suggest and to ask that the manager provide opportunities for camping, sitting and lying in the cities, so sanctioned areas, to take a look at that and, 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 and to do that. At the time, the manager came back with the staff and said, uh, based on the, the expert advice that was available, that was not the thing to, to do. And in fact, most of the cities that adopt that strategy are, 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 are having difficulty doing it in a way that is, that is successful everywhere. Oftentimes sanctioned camping areas start intending to be temporary to take care of an immediate issue. But, but it's, what people are finding, it's cities are finding it very hard to close them once they, once they, once they open. Uh, and as more and more people go in them, uh, they're not, uh, pulled out and other housing, uh, there becomes a need for greater and greater sanctioned camping areas. And those sanctioned areas become things that are, that are costly, expensive, uh, and present challenges of their, of their own. I, I think that now is the time with your resolution and the like for the, for the city to reconsider that. And I know that the, the, the staff, uh, I think appreciates the opportunity to be able to do that in light of the context that we're in now. And for me, most important from that is probably the unique position we are in to actually address what I think is, is the fundamental challenge that most cities that have done these camping areas where they haven't worked and they haven't worked, and that is, they work, uh, best when there are, when the city builds out the infrastructure and the facilities to actually move people into that kind of emergency place, but then pull them through that into more permanent housing, uh, rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing or to provide some other kind of housing, uh, exit. Uh, and while we've increased the number of those spots in our city with foundation communities and with Caritas and with, uh, Community First, uh, we don't have enough of that to be able to pull people through. What I'm excited about where we are right now is that we, in the past, we never had the resources to be able to actually do the full system. And in the absence of a system, if you focus on any piece of it, it doesn't work. Permanent supportive housing by itself doesn't take work because it's too expensive and it takes too long to get there and you're not dealing with the immediacy of the challenge. Just focusing on the immediacy of the challenge doesn't work because you actually have to pull people through that so that new people can, can, can be part of that process too, without just proliferating camping areas uh, all around the city. I, uh, am supportive of the summit plan from the chamber and the DAA and ECHO and the Austin Justice Coalition and Home's Not Handcuffed because it provides that entire system. My hope is, is that with the federal funding that, that we get and, and partners of the community, because we will need them, uh, private companies, businesses, philanthropists, clubs, neighborhoods, everybody. I mean, to the degree that this is the, the, the challenge in front of us. Uh, and I'm not sure there's any issue in our city that has ruined the passion that we've seen. We have it at this moment to, to actually meet this challenge, to set ourselves on a path uh, to, to, to reach equilibrium. And manager, I think that now's time to take another look at this option uh, and, and to see. Uh, at the same time you're taking a look at this, it might be helpful to, to revisit the, the, the balance of that ordinance back in June. There were some other suggestions that I think that you have the ability to be able to, to implement if it's something that makes sense to you with your regulatory authority. There was a, a resolution that came to the council in October uh, that, uh, we ultimately pulled down because one of our colleagues wasn't feeling well, uh, at that. And the, uh, uh, everybody was agreeing on the things that we should have done, except for the details. And I'm not sure it's really the council that should decide if somebody should be close to, when you measure 10 feet away from a, from a, from a stream, I'm not sure it's the council on the dais that should be making, you know, how many feet difference it is or whether you measure it from the top, and that's where we kind of stalled. I think that too is within your discretion, uh, and your regulatory authority as the manager of the city. Uh, there were a whole list of things presented then that I, I think maybe time is to take another look at those things to see whether those things, uh, you feel make, make sense. So the, the, the ordinance becomes, uh, that was voted on, becomes effective, uh, on the 11th. And I know that it is, uh, everyone's intent to, uh, to, to move forward with the will of the community uh, with respect to that, uh, that, that ordinance. Uh, and to put it into effect, I know that, um, you had, uh, the chief and, and the assistant city attorney speak to kind of a approach to it. We think the community and, and the council, uh, as you indicated, should be hearing shortly of how you intend to, to move forward on this. Uh, but for any community that might be listening now, do you want to just touch base, uh, at a high level uh, as you, uh, come back to the community with kind of your, uh, how you're going to proceed?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and council, a, a, as you mentioned, Mayor. So we'll be implementing and enforcing the ordinances that were approved by the voters in a humane and safe manner. Uh, it is important for all of our residents to know that even with multiple departments partnering on their implementation efforts, uh, this is not going to happen on May 11th. This is going to be a process that is over time. Because we have staff from multiple departments, including public health, police department, code and parks and recreation and others that have been in conversations. And we'll proceed with a phased implementation approach, starting with significant outreach and education as we described earlier, a prioritization on our health and safety and the coordination with our host team, uh, for connection to resources to the ma- maximum degree possible. And along with the consideration of this item, a part is also identifying the number of parks that could be used as designated camping sites. And staff are reviewing several properties identified by our real estate department as well. And so while staff remains concerned about the challenges, as has been mentioned, with providing designated sites, we also recognize that council is interested in exploring these interim options. Uh, Director McNeely is formulating a sample budget for needed infrastructure, hygiene resources and operating costs. And we will, we will, we will be working on providing a range of potential service costs depending on most intensity levels. Uh, but as you mentioned, Mayor, we'll provide more details in the coming days uh, and make sure that this plan and the, the process that we're using is communicated clearly to our community. Thank you for the opportunity.
And I appreciate that. I mean, clearly, uh, they expressed the will of the voters was to, uh, get people out of the, the tents and out of the encampments. Uh, frankly, as, as Councilmember Tovo said, I think that's the, the will of, of people on both sides uh, of the, of the election. Uh, and I think it's important that we, we move expeditiously, uh, to, to manifest that, that will. Colleagues, Councilmember Kelly and then Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you. Councilmember Tovo, I appreciate your leadership on this issue and the research and care that has gone into this IFC. Particularly, I appreciate the background information you provided on the message board about why the solution was not used in the past and the information and background you provided today. It was very helpful and I think it helps us create a better understanding of how we got to where we are today from how, where we were before. As I mentioned on the message board, the governor's office has been very open to discussions with us, even going so far as to meeting with myself, Councilmember Kitchen and Councilmember Poole about the Heal initiative. And of course, they can provide good insight about how Campus Bronza is working and how we might be able to learn from their experiences to be successful here in Austin, um, with city campsites. I provided city manager Crock with the contact information and I'm hopeful he'll reach out to them. As many of his have stated publicly, homelessness is not just an Austin problem. We need the input and support of the county and the state, as well as our nonprofit community partners in order to work towards our vision at the city of Austin of helping lift our unhoused neighbors out of their situation of being homeless and providing wraparound services for them as well. I'm thankful to have been added as a co-sponsor to this item and to be here today to vote yes on providing one of many different solutions needed to move towards solving Austin's homelessness crisis. I believe the solution outlined here today, as well as a Heal initiative, will stand the test of time. Thank you again.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Um, yes, I want to, I want to say thank you, uh, Councilmember Tovo for bringing this. Um, it is, um, much needed. I know you've been thinking about it for a while and it's certainly very timely right now that we take this step. It's an important, immediate step that needs to be taken to, uh, a, address what really is a crisis uh, in our community. As you said, and I want to emphasize, it is temporary, it is not a solution. Housing is the solution. So, um, as we continue with, uh, rolling out and implementing the Heal initiative and the other types of initiatives that we are, uh, engaging in as a community to, um, to connect people to housing, this is a step that we can take right now more quickly, uh, in parallel with that. Uh, and Mayor, I want to thank you also for your advocacy around the community summit. Um, I, I support the, what has been proposed to all of us in this community as a, as a route to reach equilibrium. And we need to come together with the city and the county and other, uh, other entities, as well as the community to make that happen. So, um, and I also want to, I want to second what Councilmember Tovo said about our homeless strategy officer. I, I could not say it any stronger, she is just fabulous. So I really appreciate her jumping in and, um, you know, very difficult job um, and working, uh, very quickly to, to help us, um, get aligned and bring all these strands together so that we're working towards a, uh, an overall, an overall implementation timeline and plan. So thank you, Diana, for that. So, um, with that said, I want to again reassure the community that this is temporary. Um, and we do, and we do mean temporary, uh, because we're all focused on and I remain focused on, uh, getting us to housing and equilibrium in the housing that we provide as quickly as we possibly can.
Councilmember Alter?
Thank you, um, I'm pleased to be a co-sponsor of this item. Um, and Councilmember Tovo, as you were talking and listing off that list, I couldn't, um, but reflect on how many of those you have led on and how persistent and, um, careful you have been in trying to always pursue solutions that we, we, that, that are humane and really try to transition our homeless neighbors into housing. We've had a challenging couple of years now and, um, you know, this is an idea that's in here that, um, we had proposed back and I think it was item 184 or something, um, a long time ago. And, um, a decision was made that that was not, um, by the city manager's office, that that was not the appropriate, um, next step, that we needed to, to focus our resources on more permanent housing. I believe that we are at a different point in time. Um, and we need to see if we can find a way, um, to provide temporary designated camping sites to help us, um, as we build the permanent supportive housing and the other, um, items that we need. I want to be clear to our community that we still have a long road ahead of us if we want to create a city where homelessness is brief, non-recurring and rare. And I would invite folks to, you know, be part of the solution. Um, the summit is great, but the summit has no impact if folks beyond the city don't join us in these efforts. And so I would really invite philanthropy and our faith communities and everyone else to, like us, take another look at how we're approaching this, um, dig deep and invest in coming up with solutions. Um, with this resolution, um, we are still relying on experts to be able to help us to shape what these designated camping areas might look like. And I'm looking for our staff to guide us, um, as we move forward. Um, but I think this is an important step that demonstrates, once again, our seriousness and the efforts that we're taking to try to address a challenge that is not just Austin's challenge alone.
Colleagues, anything else before we take a vote on this item 70? Councilor Kassar?
I, I appreciate this, I'm going to be, uh, voting, uh, voting for it. I do want to, uh, note, I think, an important addition from Councilmember Tovo that relates to what the mayor said, which is that we should be looking for ways to make sure that this is adding on to our strategies, um, rather than, than potentially take, taking from, um, other strategies. Because again, the goal is for us to have places for people to go while we know that we need housing for a real solution. So we, so I appreciate Councilmember Tovo, the, the update and addition that we would really hope for the manager to bring us options that don't reduce affordable housing or permanent supportive housing plans that we have. Um, you know, if we're, if we end up pulling from dollars or other assets or bonds or land or what have you that otherwise would be going to solving the problem, then we, um, then that may further, then we could wind up in those cycles where this has been more of a challenge in other cities. Um, because we really need folks to have a, have an exit and that means making sure that we have, um, making sure that we have the housing available. So I do, uh, want to appreciate, uh, the, the thoughtfulness, especially as it relates to that last amendment, uh, because we know that the real, um, solution is for us to try to house those thousands of people over the course of the, of the coming years and, and make sure that we can continue to do that while we look at this strategy. I also would be interested in, um, making sure that we compare the costs of, of any of these campsites or any of this work compared to, uh, what the other next best option may be on the, on the table. Um, because I, you know, sometimes we talk about how the hotel strategy can be, uh, you know, isn't... be, you know, isn't always as cheap as we'd like, but once you talk about laundry and being prepared for storms and folks having a safe place to be and bathrooms and utilities, it does start adding up. So, you know, I, I would be open to sort of the range of options and making sure we compare the cost of campsites to the other options that might be available for the manager and, and real estate. But, but I, but I will support this and especially wanted to, to call out that addition. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Tovo, do you want to close this? Our mayor protest?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm, I was just a, a comment, one echoing all the thanks to the folks who, who helped to sort of guide the conversation to where we are today. I know it's been a lot of voices and a lot of contributions, diverse contributions to the conversation. Thank you, Councilmember Tovo, for bringing this item forward. I do think it's an additional important consideration along the way. I had an opportunity yesterday to talk to Mayor Cantrell. She says to tell you hello, Mayor Allen, out of New Orleans. And we were talking about, specifically about a program called Grace at the Green Light. It's a program that reunites families, and so it's an additional tool, a reunification tool. So, in addition to the hotel strategy, in addition to Heal, in addition to this resolution, in addition to, hopefully, one day we get to engage with Grace at the Green Light, in addition to, you know, and so I'm really fully recognizing just how, I can't recall which colleague it was that talked about the emphasis on collective effort. And I know sometimes we say both sides, but I mean, all the sides, everybody, you know, I, I don't think there's, there should be sides in this conversation about human beings that don't have lodging and access to basic amenities, in which case I, I, I keep coming back to this place, and, and I don't know how we, I don't know how we transcend it without, you know, that invitation from Councilmember Kelly to go and, and talk to the governor, because I don't know how we transcend that space where we also need for our state to make massive investments in mental health care. We also need for our state to make massive investments in places where people can go, like a campus like ASH, where you can get the varying degrees of treatment that you need for whatever it is that you need treatment for. And I, I don't know how to keep that coming. I mean, we have HUD, right? But unless we, until we have a national fund that everybody pays into and, you know, the payout is commensurate with your homeless population, we don't, we don't, no one state at a time can do this. We have to address it as, as a nation, because some cities, some states will inherently just have a larger homeless population. And so, now that we are officially the 10th largest city in the nation, I hope very much that a continuation of these conversations is those sort of underli, that underlying lack, you know, that underlying lack of those social safety nets and places for people to go and places for people to receive treatment. I, I hope that's a, an additional robust conversation to this, to this suite of options that we're discussing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tovo, do you want to close out? Are you, you okay?
Mayor, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a vote then. As amended, those in favor of item number 70, please raise your hand. As opposed, I see it being unanimous on the dais. All right, let's pick up, it's 6:24. Colleagues, we have item number 41, and then we have the four zoning cases. Do you want to keep pushing, or do you want to come back at 7:30? Councilmember Harman, is it?
Thank you, if I may. My, my in-laws just landed, and I'd like very much to have dinner with the family. So, if, if anybody else is, is amiable to us coming back at 7:30, I'd like very much to be able to do that.
Okay. All right, then let's go ahead and take a recess of the council meeting here at 6:24. We'll come back at 7:30. We'll take up item 41 first, and then we'll take the zoning matters in order. Yes, Councilwoman Alter.
I just want to throw out that 41 may take a while, and I'm just wondering if we might be more productive if we had a little bit more time to think through the details and, and come up with some solutions. We can decide at 7:30. I just want to throw that out in case that others would support that.
Okay, let's see where we are at 7:30, if that's okay. Councilwoman Kitchen.
Yes, I just want, just a heads up, I really appreciate the amendments that the mayor pro tem was able to incorporate. Just to give everyone a heads up, I sent out my additional amendments. There are 19 amendments that I would like to take up with regard to these 41, and they should all be, it should be in your box. We tried to relate it back to the page numbers in, in the mayor pro tem's version three to make it easier for people to, to see it.
Sounds good. I also see Councilmember Tovo has also posted amendments.
Yes.
All right, 6:26, we'll be back at 7:30. We're in recess. All right, then let's go ahead, and we'll reconvene the Austin City Council meeting here at 7:45 PM. It is May 6th. Ann Morgan.
Sorry, Mayor, but the mayor pro tem is not here.
We need the mayor pro tem. And Kitchen.
We just got a version four for 41, which I have not had the chance to read. I'm not going to be ready to take up 41 for a little while.
Okay, I think we, think we could handle some of the zoning stuff? Let's try that, then. Let's see. Natasha with us?